Okay, seven o'clock. You'll be open to meeting tonight. Do we ask for the share if we get taxes within our limits? Do you have the taxes all done?
Yeah, tax, um, everyone's put on their taxes.
All right.
Not, no minutes.
You weren't here for the last meeting, but do you have any questions on the limits of the last meeting?
No, I don't.
What about it ready for?
Not ready for?
No.
Next one.
Okay. And this will be the order of appearance. Number one will be 2020-05, David and Heidi Kraus, 14th birthplace. Number two, 2020-04, Peter Lipsky, 5 Barber Lane. Number three would be 2019-29, Takashi Akiko Okumura, 2 Hancock Place, excuse me. I don't pronounce that correctly. There was a saying when I went to school, before I became, before I became an engineer, I couldn't spell, you know. I forget how it actually goes, but I'll think of it later. Number four, 2019-28, Alexander and Anne McLawhorn, 47 Ardsley. Number five, 2019, David Waymouth, 33 Maple. Number six, 2020, Daniel Vins and Charlotte Radamakers, 2 Heritage. Six, seven, 2020-10, Marion Birch, 127, Rudy Duvalay. Number eight, Ronald John, 53 Hudson Avenue. Number nine, Yefat, Yefatah Fletcher, 255 South Placa. Number 10, 2020-07, May and Scott Sykes, 3 Wiffen Place. Four years ago, I couldn't spell engineer, and now I are one. Okay, number one, 2 Heritage, number one, sorry, 14 birthplace.
Mike Mottrelli from Michael Lewis Architects. I think it's off.
We received Han's comments about doing exceeding coverage, about a 2.3%. And we'll make variance for that, which is something we're pursuing from the beginning, or we're thinking about pursuing from the beginning. So we will address that court.
Okay. Anybody?
See if there's any comments from the board.
Any, any comments from, uh, if you weren't here?
I have none.
Any comments from the public? Does anybody want a briefing on this before we move on?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
You have a resolution?
I do. Whereas in February 2020, David and Heidi Kraus applied for site development plan approval to construct an unenclosed covered patio and modify an existing patio on the property of 14th Birthplace, which lies in the Village's View Preservation District. And Han Engineering reviewed the plans and in a memorandum dated February 4th listed a number of issues with the proposal, which were all addressed in a subsequent submission. Whereas the proposed construction would exceed permitted coverage and therefore requires a variance from zoning board of appeals. The planning board held a public hearing on this application on February 5th and March 4th, 2020. The proposed construction would not impact views of the Hudson River from neighboring properties or rights of way. It's a type 2 action under SEACRA, therefore requires no environmental review. Now therefore be resolved that the planning board grants site development plan approval of improvements reflected in the drawings entitled modifications to 14thBirthplace, prepared by Michael Lewis Architects, subject to, one, receiving a coverage variance from the ZBA, and, two, demonstrating that any new outdoor lighting complies with the Village's new outdoor lighting regulations.
Do you have a motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
Motion for a...
A, a motion to accept it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes. The end is finished. All right, second coming up is Peter Lipsky, 5 Barber Lane. If you'd want to be attorney, please. Thank you.
Good evening, Nick Bell, St. Anthony, I'm Harry and Peter Lipsky. We were here last month to present this, the deck application. We did receive comments from Han Engineering at that time. Our intention was to address all the comments, and I thought we did, but there were a couple of comments that came back. They did have questions with respect to coverage. We did update the zoning chart, and they did have some further questions about coverage, and perhaps I'll just clarify it here tonight. Our deck is in this area here. It's over an existing loose-laid, loose-laid paper area. So there's really not much in terms of additional coverage, with the exception of the steps and landing that come off the deck. So when you look at our existing rest proposed, there's 32 square foot difference in coverage, only because our deck is over an existing covered, basically covered area. They did have questions with respect to lighting as well. There are two existing light fixtures. And the intention was to maintain light fixtures. This is that back area. There's two light fixtures there. I haven't discussed an increasing amount of light fixtures with the client. As I mentioned last time, there were, there was an existing deck here previously. So we were just intending to keep the same light fixtures. And I believe the last comment they had was with respect to the notice. I did bring the notice tonight. I believe that was... The, the landscape consultant had some questions about shrubbery and trees, and we did provide to our ladies to help screen the area from the heater.
Is the other body acceptable for your...
I guess she had no comments.
Okay. That's it?
That's it.
Any comments?
No comments.
No? Any comment for the public? Have a resolution?
In February 2020, Peter Lipsky applied for site development plan approval to construct a deck on his house at 5 Barber Lane. Han Engineering reviewed the plans and in a memorandum dated February 4th listed a number of issues with the plans, most of which were addressed in a subsequent submission. Planning board requested that plans be installed around the bottom of the deck, which request was satisfied in subsequent submission. Planning board held a public hearing on the application on February 5th and March 4th. It's a type 2 action under SEACRA, therefore requires no environmental review. Now therefore be resolved that the planning board grants site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled "Proposed," I guess it's extension, wood deck replacement design for the Lipsky residence, prepared by Nicholas Costini Architects, subject to, one, complying with the items listed in the Han memorandum dated March 3rd, and, two, demonstrating that any new outdoor lighting complies with the Village's new outdoor lighting regulations. So the fact that there was lighting before doesn't mean that you, if you're putting new lights on, they do have to comply. And, and, and the section number of the new village code is in the, um, resolution. So just make sure you can...
Motion to accept the resolution?
Motion to accept the resolution.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Number three, 2 Hancock Place. You notice I avoided trying to pronounce those names?
Good evening, I'm Christina Griffin, the architect. And we received the variance that we needed for lot coverage at the zoning board meeting in January, or, um, February, and now we're back.
Wait a second. For everyone's edification, this is...
Okay.
You don't notice that?
I, I, just as you might recall, we took, we reduced the size of the patio to make sure it was outside of the aqueduct buffer. And we have plantings all along the aqueduct and a deer fence that'll be hidden by most of the shrubbery that we plan to put here. We've been to the zoning board, and we received a variance for lot coverage, which is actually the proposed, is slightly less than existing. We're just reorganizing how, where the coverage is because we're moving the driveway so that the access is off a Hancock rather than along and inside the aqueduct buffer. So this is the drawing that showed the colored areas that shows the new impervious areas. And this was the before, which we went over at our last meeting. Next sheet is going to show our landscaping plan. We have now a planting plan. And as you may recall, we eliminated the low wall that we have. We just have a solid fence, I'm not sure, here, but up to the aqueduct buffer. And then at that point, in the 30-foot aqueduct buffer, we transitioned to a deer fence that is going to be in between shrubbery, and that will continue all the way along the property line and meet up with the existing deer fence that's there. This is the planting plan that was reviewed in our list of plans by Suzanne Nolan, and we received her comments. We also had an arborist do a study of the existing trees, and now we know which ones are healthy and which ones are not, and which ones will be removed. This is a view of the, quote, an aqueduct.
From the aqueduct.
From the aqueduct, looking at the property as it exists. This is, this is the property line, and this is what we're proposing with the new plantings here and a deer fence that is just, you know, barely visible between the evergreen shrubbery. Another view of before and after. This is the corner of the aqueduct along the property, and we're planning to put this type of plant bed here with a deer fence in between the shrubbery. And our solid fence begins after the aqueduct buffer and then wraps around the property. We also added some drawings of the fencing. We put them onto our elevations. This is looking at the house, the west elevation. This is our solid wood fence. This, our north elevation, it wraps around and then ends at our plant bed and deer fence that wraps, that is inside the aqueduct buffer and then runs along the property line. We also took all the fence details off landscape architects drawings, put them onto ours because of comments we received about, from, I think, Han Engineering about that. So we now have a detail of our wood fence and a detail of our deer fence. These are civil engineering drawings, and most of the comments that we received from Han Engineering and Suzanne Nolan were related to civil engineering, and I just liked, I'll bother from Hudson Engineering to just address those comments.
Well, I bother, we can do most of the details offline, if you just want to just give it...
He's gonna give a general, general idea.
Yeah, like I said, with regard to the, Robert Abdullah from Hudson Engineering. With regard to the engineering, um, comments, it was limited to adjusting the gravel depth in the coltex, which we've adjusted, and putting gravel below the steel trench strain. Nothing too significant. And then with regard to most of the landscaping comments, it's a matter of adjusting the erosion control measures to extend further. So extending this fence here, extending this fence here, maybe relocating the construction staging area to here, and then adding an additional construction entrance, nothing of which is really significant. We can go back and forth with the landscape architect until she's satisfied, so.
Was landscape architect satisfied with the selection? I haven't seen it.
She has a few comments that would interest.
Sustainability, the trees that'll last, the native trees and all that other kind of things. Okay, anybody on the board here have a comment?
George? Just got here, this, this is the one we were talking about.
Yeah, so...
You had, you had an interest in the...
Yeah, if you remember that we talked about the appearance from the, the aqueduct?
Yes.
And it seems like you've satisfied that. The only thing I'd ask is you go to that, the photomontage you did.
Which one did you want?
There you go. Is, one of the things that it's important for this board at least is when this stuff is shown like this, that in reality, it comes out as it's shown. And we've had a, years ago, we had one that was very similar to this about trying to hide a deer fence within. And my attitude was like, it's okay if you see some of it, but it shouldn't be this predominant like you can still see it. So what we're gonna ask is that after this is done, that I would propose that the site visit is done to see if, if in fact, it's going to live up to what you're presenting for this, and if in fact it isn't, and that is considerably different than what you're showing right now, that that be addressed.
Actually, you know, we went through a lot of effort to find, we, an landscape architect who would be sensitive to this, the aqueduct buffer, putting plants here that, or native plants, and also fit in with, and look natural. And I know that Susan Janschel actually went through the photomontage because she said a lot of these plants are, she tried to match the image of the actual plants that she chose here. So it is our intention for this to look like that.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that, so that, that start with that, I just wanted the reality.
Check.
Okay. Any comments for the public? Most of, most of the village, most of the village walks the aqueduct, so if anybody has any thoughts on the aqueduct? No? Okay, do you have a resolution? Mary Ann, what about what George just said?
Well, I mean, it seems to me that there's something you could do, I don't know, you know, a, a condition is that it has to have those planting, and when I read it, it says it has to be naturalistic planting. And then, so if you do your inspection and it's not, then it's not satisfying the resolution.
And the resolution...
I think that's problematic, too.
Well, however you want to handle, I don't know that, I mean, I don't know how you make it a condition, either...
Yeah, the only thing I can suggest is we could add that the village landscape architect signs off on it, that's the, that's probably the easiest solution.
Well, I think we wanted to see it too. George wants to see it.
You have a plan that should have a count, and it has a number, and that's what we're gonna look for.
Yeah, well, I think, aside from, aside from the specific number and type, the aesthetic of looking at it.
I, I'm not arguing that, but I just don't see why... How are you gonna enforce it? Right, how, how do I enforce it? Well, then we're just gonna ask you to, in good faith, to, to do such a thing. Because the last time that was done, it actually, there was a real question about, will it be, was for a pool. And the idea was not to see the pool. And in fact, we went out a year later, and it was done really well. So I'm just hoping that you, that your photomontage is similar to what your planting plan is.
Okay. I don't know, I, I understand...
I mean, I think it makes sense for you...
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I could, we could add is maybe provide substantial screening of the deer fence. Is that the word? That's...
But that's, that's in the plans.
That's already in the plan.
That's in the plans. I think that...
Just reference the photomontage.
Since...
Photomontage is part of the...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm not trying to get a big deal, no, I'm, I'm just, I'm struggling with...
I, I, you, you, the resolutions here.
Yeah, let me go, let me go through the whole thing. And I, I think, I think it would be covered because it's gotta be, it's gotta, there's, one of the conditions is that it comply with Suzanne Nolan's recommendations, so she's gonna have to do it, but...
I, I think the, the, to dramatize the, the worst-case scenario, that if we see a bunch of Charlie Brown Christmas trees, and, and...
Well, this, this, this the point of the landscape plan.
I, I, what else is up, a note in the building permit that required to get Suzanne Nolan to sign off on it's here.
Okay.
I can, that, that's, I think, a layer of, a simple layer that it's easy to enforce.
Okay.
Um, whereas in, oh, did you ask for public...
I did.
Okay, good. In 20, in December 2019, Takashi and Akiko Okumura applied for site development plan approval to relocate the driveway, construct in addition to the rear of the house, convert an existing garage to a family room, relocate the driveway, and construct a new garage on the property at 2 Hancock Place, which is located in the View Preservation Overlay District and adjacent to the, quote, the aqueduct. Whereas the proposed improvements require variances for coverage and for additional structures in the OCA. Whereas on January 28th, the zoning board of appeals granted the variances on the condition that the applicants provide soundproofing to the proposed family room facing the aqueduct. Han Engineering reviewed the plans and in memorandum dated December 3rd, January 8th, and February 28th, listed a number of issues, most of which were addressed in subsequent submissions. Suzanne Nolan, the Village's landscape consultant, reviewed the plans and made a number of suggestions, most of which were incorporated in subsequent plans. The planning board recommended that the planting along the OCA should be layered and naturalistic, which recommendation was incorporated in the subsequent plan. The applicant consulting arborist made a number of recommendations for protecting several of the trees, whereas the planning board held a public hearing on the application on December 4th, January 8th, and March 4th. Whereas proposed improvements will not negatively impact the view of the Hudson River from neighboring properties or adjacent rights of way. It's a type 2 action under SEACRA and therefore requires no environmental review. Now therefore be resolved that the planning board grants the application for site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled "Extension and Renovations to the Okumura Residence," prepared by Christina Griffin Architect. The landscape plan and plantless mitigation plan, prepared by Aspect 120 Landscape Architecture, and, um, plans prepared by Hudson Engineering, subject to, one, installing the soundproofing required by the ZBA. Two, complying with the items in the Han memo dated February 28th. Three, complying with the recommendations requirements listed in Suzanne Nolan's memorandum dated March 3rd, which she'll make her sign off on. And four, demonstrating that any new outdoor lighting complies with the Village's new outdoor lighting regulations. I thought that one of the fixtures on your lighting plan looked like it might not, not be dark sky compliant. It was not blacked on the top, so, but maybe it's underneath something, so. Do you, your, your lighting plan is on there? There was a, there was a plan that had lighting fixtures on it. I was thinking of a different application.
Do you have a...
Oh, that's yours. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, um, okay, but just make sure your lighting is advised.
Motion.
That's it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second, anybody?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here's one copy, too. Next copy is 2019-28, Alexander and Anne McLawhorn, 47 Ardsley Avenue West. I may say so, thank you, it was a nice job.
Thank you. Christina Griffin, the architect of this house.
Yeah, that may not, that may not apply here.
Well, certainly. Well, we, we went to the zoning board, we received all the variances that we need, and that's really, because the house is not good for me in many ways, and we got them for the sit backs, lot coverage, and floor ratio. And if you can, if you recall, the additions are really quite small. In fact, we did this for the zoning board just so that they could see that the areas in...
And blue are existing structures.
And the yellow we're adding. This is an existing porch, this is a recessed porch, and this is an old porch, and we're making them solid, so we're adding some mass, but it's really very little floor area. So we received the variances for that, and we really have very few comments from Han Engineering. I think they just wanted to make sure we had that note about the exterior lighting on our plans.
The note was there...
This is, um, Rosette Garcia-Lai, she's the project designer, maybe you could sign that? So I think the, we received that comment, I think, the first planning board meeting, and it was, it was addressed, so the light, the sconces covered on the top.
No, the other one.
This is a hanging pendant, it's under a roof structure.
Okay.
Yeah, so it was, it was the...
Okay.
Yeah, so all the lights are dark sky. That was the only comment we received today. So all the comments have been addressed, and we received all the variances.
Doctor, okay?
Yes.
Any comments for the public? If we want, any comments from the board? Do you have a motion?
Yeah, I do. In December 2019, Alexander and Anne McLawhorn applied for site development plan approval to construct additions at the front sides and rear of their house at 47 Ardsley Avenue West, which is located in the View Preservation Overlay District. Proposal required variances for coverage and FAR, both of which were granted by the zoning board of appeals on January 28th, then February 25th. Han Engineering reviewed the plans and in memorandum dated November 27th and January 3rd listed a number of issues which were addressed in subsequent submissions. Suzanne Nolan, the Village's landscape, landscape consultant, reviewed the plans and made several suggestions, which were incorporated in subsequent plans. Planning board held a public hearing on the application on December 4th, January 8th, and March 4th. Proposed improvements will not negatively impact the view of the Hudson River from neighboring properties or adjacent rights of way. It's a type 2 action under SEACRA. Now therefore be resolved that the planning board grants the application for site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled "McLawhorn Residence," prepared by Christina Griffin Architect, subject to complying with the one item in the Han memo dated March 3rd.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve? Second, anything? All in favor?
Aye.
And next up is David Waymouth, 33 Maple Street.
Hit the remote, hit, take the remote control, just sit down. That was wrong. No, that's fine.
You saw you're on the street, you couldn't work your fucking phone.
Yeah. Very funny.
Douglas McClure for the Waymouths at, I forgot the address here, 33 Maple Street. We were here before, there was concern we needed to go to the zoning board because we were adding a third story. Long story short, we've reconfigured the attic, taking out some area, and done all the calculations, and we still are within the two-and-a-half-story requirement of the code. So we no longer need the variance.
That's it?
That's the changes, that's where we are.
Can you show what it's gonna look like from the front?
Oh, sure. So, I'm not sure what that extra line is. Oh, that's the, the area that... This line here, that's the area that keeps it within code. But this is the door we're adding on the front.
Yeah, right now it's just a sloppy roof.
Exactly. Just a simple gable roof.
Okay. Any comment from the board?
I have none.
You good?
It's good.
Anybody from the audience?
Math.
Do you have a resolution?
Yeah.
I, they cabled it because they wanted me to do these calculations.
Whereas in November 2019, David Waymouth applied for site development plan approval to construct two new dormers and thereby create an additional story at his house at 33 Maple Street, which is located in the View Preservation Overlay District. And whereas the proposal required a variance for the additional story, which the Zoning Board of Appeals declined to grant, whereas the plans were revised to eliminate the need for the variance. And whereas Han Engineering reviewed the plans and in the memorandum dated November 6th listed several issues with the plans, which were addressed in a subsequent submission. Suzanne Nolan, the Village's Landscape Consultant, reviewed the plans and made several suggestions, which were incorporated in subsequent plans. Planning Board held a public hearing on the application on November 6th and December 4th, 2019, and March 4th, 2020. The proposed improvements will not negatively impact the view of the Hudson River from neighboring properties or adjacent rights of way. It's a type-two action under SEACRA. Resolve that the Planning Board grants the application for site development plan approval of the improvements reflected in the drawings entitled "Waymouth Residence Prepared by McSee Architecture."
Okay. I'd like to make a show that Kevin German recused himself on this item. Have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Hold on a favor. Aye.
Thank you very much.
Number six is 2020-06, Daniel Vins and Charlotte Radley, Dynamakers, two having a
Pat Senchneider here representing the application. We were here before you at the last meeting. There were a lot of good comments that we got, both from this board and also from Han. We're in the process right now of having a surveyor pick up the edges of the wetlands and the pond itself to get that information on the drawing. We're hoping to have that shortly. We didn't have it for this submission. Basically, I'm not going to waste time going through a lot of these things. I do want to point out one thing that became an issue, or was discussed at the last meeting. The idea of this retaining wall, where we've taken the existing and then moved it, we're proposing to eliminate that. It seems like we can grade it through. I've got a sketch of that that I can show. I think another concern, actually, let us use that safe sheet. We show a lot of X's, 11 X's. Right now, in this drawing, the X's are trees to be removed, which has been determined by the tree arborist, who's evaluated the trees. We've called him back in. We've asked him to do kind of a tighter evaluation of it and determine whether some of these trees, yeah, they're in decline, but that doesn't mean they have to come down. So our hope is that we'll be able to reduce this from 11 to maybe four. And in another sketch I'll show in a minute is to make sure that these trees aren't coming down for the garage. We've shifted the garage over. So the idea is to get it so that we're not... You know, the trees might still come down if there's a decision to do that, but it's not mandated by what we're providing. Just a few. The proposal here is an addition along the side of the house, plus a small addition back here in the corner. And moving, there's an existing deck here, moving that out. This portion of the addition is two stories. It has a velveteer room above. And there was some question about square footage, and that we counted that as twice.
For FAR?
For FAR. Not for... Yeah, for FAR. So that was included for that. I think we still need to pick up the basement. We've never been in the basement.
A portion of the basement, it counts empty or full.
Yeah, so we'll...
Unless it's a crawl space, which I know there's a lot on the house.
Yeah, but I think there is some finished area down there, so we'll pick that up and make sure that it's included. But I think we've got plenty of extra FAR in this house. We still do have questions about how this thing works in the IF-20 with a 80,000-square-foot property. I think we've done it twice, and it sounds like neither time have we gotten it right. So maybe you can walk us through, not here, but...
You still have a line.
Yeah.
We could also go over the height because it seems to be a difference of opinion on your site plan that has the elevation in the corner and your...
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
It seems to me like what you're saying is you're sort of in process. And frankly, it's sort of a waste till you're ready to present your project.
Well, one...
If you get a question still about a lot of different things, that it makes more sense for you to go complete your work and have a thorough presentation, and then come back to us.
Right. That's... If it wasn't for the fact that the engineering has been...
And trees, and all the other things, the landscape, I don't see any of the landscape. I think you should come back. And we've done this in the past. This is not a, like, in-process process. This is you come when you have a full presentation to present to us, and then we react to that.
Okay. There are engineering issues that were not available at the last meeting. Those have been submitted by the engineer. He's here tonight. I'll...
Do you see what I'm saying?
Sure.
No, I'm sorry. Maybe you don't understand. Is that, for me, you're supposed to come in with a complete package.
Okay.
And not to come in piecemeal with this stuff. So I would prefer if you would come in with a complete package, and then we can address all the issues at once.
Okay. Can I ask one question on this, just to see? No, I'm trying to accommodate questions that have been made, and I would like to know if what we've done is what would satisfy the comment that you had at the last meeting.
And I guess you don't really get what I'm saying.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay? I guess you don't get what I'm saying. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
I'll just go over the open questions, just sort of, none of this. There's one thing here we're going to do. We asked Suzanne Nolan to do an open space, an inventory report, and this is part of it. You still need water and water course permits, but you can't get them because you haven't mapped them yet.
May be.
May, yeah.
Because you gotta map it.
Our hope is that that shows that we don't. But regardless, we have...
There's a steep slope issue where the containing wall was, where the protected trees dropped down to three-inch diameter. So if you've got any trees there, you gotta address that.
Yep.
We asked about moving the garage, but your present plans don't show where you moved it to, so just keep quiet. It's good that you're moving the garage because it was a tough road to hoe to take a tree down because of the silver paddle on the garage. You still... Didn't sound like you had the FAR and the coverage calculation fixed. The height issue is still not fixed, as far as I can tell. And the planning plan, that works. And as you said, we don't want to be approving trees that are in decline because all trees are at some stage in decline. I'm fairly old, I'm in decline. So that means...
As am I. And I agree with everything you just said.
Okay. And so you're done?
Unless you've got questions about the engineering, which was not submitted until this meeting.
Aye.
Nothing that you...
No, I'm gonna use it.
Well, last night there was a drainage report that needed to be submitted.
We got that.
Yeah.
You didn't review it, though?
We did. We have a few comments.
You could do that.
Yeah. That was the main reason I thought it would be good to contest our question. But if there aren't, then we don't need to do anything.
Suzanne, yeah, I just wanted to make a request. Usually you submit a letter that shows how it's been changed over the previous plan.
We will.
And there wasn't one here, so it was hard to read it exactly.
Right.
Well, you just said he moved the garage.
No, we're...
Well, he's thinking about it.
Are you thinking about it?
It wasn't demonstrated on the plan.
Well, for the next time, obviously.
Right.
One of my questions was, you said you're moving the garage.
Yeah.
You still have the same old plan.
And we had a sketch that we could talk, but I won't get you to do it tonight.
You understand, it's a slippery slope if we say, oh, take a tree... I mean, you've got maybe 100 trees here, I don't know.
Probably.
But, you know, I don't want a slippery slope, and next year if somebody, a resident comes in with one tree in front of his southern exposure, oh, you've done it before, I want to take the tree down. And I don't want to go there. So move the garage.
Thank you.
Let's take a look at...
As long as we're here, you'll hear any comment from the public? Okay.
Your 402-5 lowest point?
Yeah.
Because by lowest of existing or proposed.
Right.
You have 400 above it.
Thank you.
So what they've done is 402-5? The other quarter, you also have basically a 400. Or really it's less, I think it's 3... I think it's 398 there. So you have to use the lowest grade, either prior or...
I'll make sure that I wear that.
So it's got the...
Yeah. Three foot.
Three feet.
That's a lot.
A little bit more.
Unless we have to go to the zoning board?
You're welcome to go to the zoning board.
Thank you very much.
Number seven, 20... 2020-10, Marion Birch, 127, Route Dubois Lane.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is James Gibbons with Gibbons Engineering. This is our first meeting with the board, and this project is extending a deck about 193 square feet. But in that process of extending the deck, we will be rebuilding the deck. We have received comments from Han Engineering and our landscape, or the village landscape architect, so we have some work to do to get those in order. So if the board has questions, we will be glad to hear them. If not, we have some work to do.
The only question I had was some side yard screening, and maybe Suzanne Nolan brought that up.
Yes. So I think we have screening on both sides to worry about. And Suzanne Nolan had mentioned coming into the corner of the area, which we have to address that as well.
Was there any need to get... I know you have your own plot of land, but was there any need to contact the condos with the Home Homes Association, because you are in the... Fieldstone?
Yeah, we should do that if... Should we do that, Eugenia?
Yeah, we contact all the neighbors.
Could you use a microphone, please?
Identify yourself and just... Let's make sure.
I mean, after we go through this process and then we come out of the woodwork... Oh, you can't do that.
I understand. I understand, yeah. Yes, basically, we contact the all the neighbors in a radio...
Well, the individual neighbors, but the Fieldstone, the Home Homes Association or whatever thing.
No, just the neighbor. Yeah, just the neighbor.
We'll make a letter to the association and advise them. We did the mail of this that makes good sense to us.
Yeah, okay.
We've got new numbers. Variance recovered is significant.
No.
So I think...
What is it?
100 and... It's going, the allowable is 1,327 square feet. Existing is 2,607, and it's going to 2,800. So it's going to be 111% over the allowable, and it's increasing from the existing 7.4%. So my suggestion is if you would like, we should send it to ZBI.
Yeah.
But wasn't this the one that you want, that the board was going to decide whether they were generally comfortable with?
No, it's not.
That's a nice one.
Okay.
So we're scheduled for ZBI.
So I hope that now later I'll provide for you the deadlines on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any comments from the public on this?
I have a...
Board?
No.
No. Screen.
2020-09, Ronald John, 53 Hudson Avenue.
Good evening, board. My name is Ronald John. Myself and Michelle are the owners of the property. I want to apologize that my architect was pulled out of town, so he's not able to answer my questions. But I'd just like to... My presentation's not as fancy as some of the others, but just like to say that we have applied for adding about 295 square feet to the back of the house, the existing house, which for the most part, probably about 80% of that is already covered by a deck. So we'll be removing the deck and enclosing that space. This space right here is where the deck is, so this is the additional space that would be enclosed over and above what is already there. Just a CPA by trade, so I'd like to...
You're moving the front... Appearance, but I look at, you're moving the door, you're facing the house, moving the door to the right?
Correct.
And there's a big tree right there. What's going to happen to that tree?
Um, we don't anticipate touching that tree at all.
The door is going to be right in front of it.
Okay.
The plant has no indication of trees at all.
Okay.
There were several issues that we want to sit down and take notes. Do we need a site plan?
We sent the architect. Did you see it?
I did not see it.
Okay, just...
Covered in FAR calculations?
DA.
The site plan was just...
Plant was the good architecture. The site plan was a development plan.
Okay.
So there's a lot of little stuff.
Okay.
It's all natural stuff.
Okay. So you want to cross it back?
I can go over the details of it with you. Can you enter the office tomorrow?
Sure.
I can go over the details with you.
I'll just finish what I had.
It's just what?
I think there was a question, I think the council asked, but the description in the notice that the neighbors may not have been as described as it should be.
Okay.
And is there any change in height?
Not to my knowledge, no.
In the construction access, the left side, as you look at the house, you've got to be careful, it's a neighbor's property, and you're pretty close to it.
Absolutely.
You don't want to upset the neighbor.
Nor do I.
And there's a water course which necessitates some evaluation of wetland and flooding. There's water back there somewhere.
Way back, yeah.
If it's anywhere on the property, then it becomes an issue for being addressed.
Got it.
And as Ed said, there's FAR... You know what FAR is? It's floor area ratio and the coverage issue, the calculations.
Okay.
Okay. You have homework.
Suzanne, could I just... I think the notice that they sent to the neighbors wasn't in here, so we don't know what it said. Yeah. Not that I didn't...
Hey, this was from the package you probably sent.
Yeah, he probably sent it, but it's supposed to be included. But I think it's on the list of stuff.
Tomorrow will be great. Tomorrow's actually better.
Okay. Any comment while we're here from the public, as long as he's here to get together?
I just have a quick question.
You gotta come up and read the microphone.
My hair. Identify yourself.
My name is Ron Lolo. I'm... My name is Ron Lolo. We live next door to him. On my 45 Hudson Avenue. And the left side of the... Is the roof going above the garage or above the bedroom? Is that going to be lifted up? Because in the plans, it looks like it's one continuous, you know, pitch like this. Now you have a double, you know, above the garage and bedroom, it's like a double.
Okay.
And the plan looks like you're going to take off both roofs and make it one solid unit, I mean, one solid pitch like this. Is that... Are you taking...
There's no change in the height of the roof.
All right, okay. Because that's what I wanted to know, because the pitch, it looks like it's... You're going to take... It's going to be like, you're going to take off both roofs and make it look like, you know, not like that. But you're not going to touch either one. All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Can you cover it to the board?
Yep.[1791.12]
Okay, you have your homework. Thank you so much. Can you take those off?
Thank you.
Three thirty. Got it. Thank you. I'll be there.
All right, number nine, twenty twenty oh eight Yiffa Fritcher, 255 South Buckout Street. I'm going to recuse myself and George Boyle will be acting chairman.
Uh, good evening, Board. My name is Adama Mayarano from Community Designs and Engineering. On behalf of the applicant and owner, Yiffa Fritcher, we are proposing an addition and alterations to 255 South Buckout Street. Uh, the applicant just recently purchased the home and, uh, it's his desire and wishes to create a certain aesthetic appeal of the home as well as additional habitable space that is crucial to the size of them occupying the home. So in a nutshell, what we are proposing is a one-story addition over the existing one and a half story garage on the right-hand side, uh, as well as some aesthetic updates So basically, as it sits today, the home is more of a standard colonial home. We're kind of creating more of a new American-style home. And, uh, the addition that's going over the garage on the right-hand side will occupy, obviously, the space over the garage and that will have additional bedrooms. Again, that'll, um, be in importance to the amount of children that the new owner, uh, has as well as along with the additional, um, aesthetic updates, mainly the front porch covered portico over the front. We're creating sort of a smaller, uh, lower roof style that changed the appearance that is desired by the applicant. Uh, what we are requesting here today and seek of are two area variances. The one is for the floor area ratio. We are creating an additional 782 square feet, which again is all the space that's going to be occupied above the garage and as well as, um, the coverage. So what we're proposing as well is a side on the right-hand side next to the garage, a new portico and platform that will access a new mudroom, uh, that is located inside the residence. Uh, that would be an additional 82 square feet that we are, um, creating more, uh, coverage and that's the second area variance that we'll be seeking. Uh, we did do.
The effects of, uh, the neighboring residents?
You can take the mic out if you want.
Oh, okay. Uh, the effects of the addition and how that would affect the neighboring residents in the rear. Because of the existing garage that sits there today, there is no real view of the river. Um, so essentially that is shown here. We took a picture from this residence in the back, 200 West Clinton Avenue, about right here. And obviously today there is no foliage and whatnot on the trees, so in the springtime and the summer, that'll even be more of an extreme to even try to have any views of the new addition that's going above the garage. Well, as the, uh, joining Jason 156 West Clinton, this is a picture here that shows the abundance of, you know, mature vegetation that's along the property line. This is, yeah, just like the back, uh, some pictures of the area, but back view of somewhat what that addition would kind of consist of. Uh, what we tried to do is create overall a certain degree of massing and aesthetics of the home that would still be, um, in characteristics with a lot of the neighboring homes that you see, uh, 10 Hefneam and 202 West Clinton that, that are joining the proposed, uh, project property. And yes, we did receive, obviously, comments from, uh, Hahn Engineering and the, uh, village landscape, nothing that we can't see that we can further develop and resolve. Okay.
So first of all, I think you did, we're never, I've never seen a new copy of it before.
Yes, that's first time.
Well, congratulations.
Okay.
You're, you're the first group or presentation that I've seen that is as complete of a package from my standpoint that I've, I've seen. So, uh, that's your, that's your client?
Yes.
You picked the right decision, okay?
No, no.
Uh, second of all, there, there are a couple of things that you've gotten all the comments from the, the various different people, I assume, and you can deal with that offline, stuff like that.
Of course.
So what they're asking for is two variances to zoning. And what we typically do, since you haven't done this before, is the idea is as long as we're comfortable with the physical scale and what this is in the context of this area, that's what, that's sort of the, the tenants that we look at to then let it go to zoning. They're the ones who actually have to decide this.
Sure.
But for us, it's much more of like, does this fit into the character of this area? Does this fit, you know, in what it is in terms of the bulk and coverage? Uh, and so sometimes we say, no, it doesn't yet go over there. And they have the right to go themselves with whatever it is. And then we can write an opinion that says, no, we sort of disagreed with this, but it's up to you to, to make that, that decision. So those are the sort of parameters that we're supposed to follow with this. Uh, so I'll just start by saying that if you can go to the front elevation. Actually, there's a photo, photo montage you did from the front. Is, I got a couple of questions.
Sure.
So as you can see in that front photo, uh, there's a lot of vegetation that's shown there outside.
Yes.
And one of the things that it does right now is it really sort of hides the, the garage itself. And the garage itself is at a lower scale. So when you look at that house, especially with the, the sort of White House portico that they've put in there.
Sure.
That it is a very kind of symmetrical thing. Now, I truly like what you've done to eliminate that in, in how you've treated it itself. The only issue that I have is that you've now created this wall that's across this whole thing. Okay? And that if, if you're saying that you can keep all of the landscaping that's there, including the trees, those large trees that are where the garage is, that will obscure this addition more than what you're showing here. Is that what your intention is?
Essentially, we're, because we're not digging or doing any excavation along this part of the house, only basically framing, um, they will try.
We'll have to kind of, you know, how are you going to do your finishes on the outside?
Yeah, well, from the inside, obviously, you know, they're flowering bushes, so they have some wiggle room to do the siding and whatnot, you know, it's a, uh.
But here's the thing, the reason I'm bringing it up is that for me, uh, it, it's just too long of a, uh, an expanse along the front facade, okay? And if there's a way to mitigate that, which is what it is right now, okay? Uh, that to me is, that's a better approach than what you have. Uh, so I, I would try to have you figure out how you can make it so it isn't so much of a big, long wall that's basically asymmetrical, uh, along the front facade. Uh, I understand you're trying to do this over the existing garage and not build new foundations, stuff like that. So that's why I started by, are you keeping the trees and is this going to be basically hidden from the street though?
Sure, yeah, I mean, yeah, the point is to always try to keep and, you know, a mature landscaping can be put back as, but you know, there's no extent of trying to take out any of those trees and, you know, obviously with the framing getting in there, it's just, you know.
So here's what I would suggest.
Kind of trimmed back, there is a little bit of buffer, the whole thing is building over the garage, obviously economically would be the ideal.
Totally get it. I understand, I'm not trying to, you know, I'm not trying to make.
Hey, push it back five feet and then we're talking.
No, I, I get it, I understand that. Uh, but there has to be a way for you to figure out a way to, uh, buffer and to, in essence, try to hide what I've talked about, this long expanse of law and make it in a, in a way, not that it has to be like that, it's just the bulk of what it is right now is, is hidden, is camouflaged. And when I see this elevation, I don't see that.
It's different, I mean, in real life.
And your, and your drawings say that you're keeping and stuff like that. So if there's a way that you can either if, which, that these don't survive, that they be another landscaper, that you bring it out so that it is, again, this main facade and then something.
Of course.
On the back, I would be much more comfortable with it.
The change in, you know, the material and the eaves and everything, try to help break that up too, not seem like a big.
Correct.
Massive wall, but obviously, yeah, the landscaping is the other degree of hiding that.
Correct. And that's, that's, to me, like, I understand why you're doing this with a garage and, and we don't want to make you go build a new building just for, for that. But to me, I would, that's the only way I could support is if there was a way that the landscaping is done and the material changes are done and that not necessarily having this bump out or maybe you recess the other parts in a little bit, I don't know, but somehow to make it so that, that addition is, feels like it's receding or it's hidden to some respect. And I think it just helps the, uh, the street presence of this thing, which, again, that goes sort of, that's.
Sure.
For me, the, the, and you can see it on the side of the photo as well.
This, yeah, I mean, this is kind of, the picture is also kind of, uh, where are we? Yeah, it's hard to see.
You can see it up there on the side.
Yeah.
I have a question about just, uh, what's the intent for the, for the addition? Is it, may I see that there's some windows on the ground floor?
Oh, no, this is the existing garage, so this is all existing.
Above it.
Above it is additional bedrooms, the applicant.
So the, so the windows are currently blocked by the landscaping on the ground floor?
On the ground floor, yes.
Okay, so and the intention is?
Yeah, which is, you know, here is the garage, the roof of the garage, but it's very screened by.
So provided that you could preserve the trees that are there and they survive the construction, they would continue.
That, yeah, exactly. And that's, you know, the ideal idea.
I mean, landscaping, I guess, is more crucial or the materials, like you say, just to make it lengthen without being so long.
So if, if there's a way for them to go to ZBA.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
If he brings back next time, climate says they will save or replace the tree if it fails.
In kind.
In kind, in kind in size and.
Right.
And, uh, hopefully we can send to the ZBA. Their variance is a little too large to prove subject to, so anyway, so.
Yeah, this is just about going to the ZBA.
You mean, send them now?
Send them now would be, I think, appropriate.
Okay. Okay, there you go.
Yeah, and you can still require the.
Yeah.
The landscaping before you would give a test.
Right, and to understand what the intent here is that to make that addition feel like it's an addition.
Of course, we could take a second look at exactly, you know, our buffer between the house and that and how it looks behind these bushes and, okay, if we had to replace it, it'd be this size and tight and what?
Right, and, you know, the, the spirit of what you're doing to this house is, is a good thing, so.
Sure.
I, I think, I think your client's in good hands, so.
Sure, yeah. Okay.
All right, so what we have, you say?
That's right.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Do we have any comments from the public?
Any further comments from any of the board?
No.
See you next month.
See you next month and enjoy your time at the ZBA.
All right, thank you.
The next one we asked is twenty twenty oh seven, hey, Scott Sykes, create flipping questions.
My name is Herbert Feuerstein. I'm the architect. Uh, I'm helping the Sykes out with some of the zoning aspects. And this is, uh, James Doyle, he's the landscape architect. This application is for a pool and some patio work and some landscaping. In some ways, this house is very unique. It dates back to the early 1900s. And in fact, the front of the house, front facade, was the rear of the house when it was built. The, uh, the rear facade is basically the front door to the home. Uh, it faced Broadway, which is very typical of the homes of the early 1900s, uh, late 1800s, and, uh, the rear faced the river. Uh, so the primary outdoor living areas are what is now the front of the house. Um, uh, and, and that drove, uh, the landscape architect towards where he wanted to place the pool.
In term?
In terms of these drawings.
I can come out of there.
Yeah. An architect can figure that out.
Oh, it was an apt, a test.
So this is, this is a, a terrace that they spent a lot of time on, kitchen being here. This little area, here is this covered porch, and the thought process was to put the pool there, um, and access with the rest of the house. And, uh, I might use. I think one of the issues we have is that the house, as it is now, is not compliant with lot coverage, and this is not making it better.
Good evening, um, James Doyle from James Doyle and Design Associates. And, um, unfortunately, we're following a previous applicant that was very thorough and yesterday we, we received commentary from, um, Hahn Engineering. So we understand that we have a lot of work ahead of us, um, and are confident that we can comply with, uh, a lot of what's requested. It's typical of our process to further detail and engage with, um, structural and civil engineers, which, um, has been noted. And I've also taken into account the comments from the landscape architect that, uh, that were issued yesterday also. Um, but as Howard mentioned, we, this house is atypical to a lot of the, um, projects that we work on in that the entertaining spaces are at the front and at the side of the house. So we did situate the pool, um, closer to those entertaining spaces. Uh, it's also in the flattest part of the property, so it would be, um, uh, would probably be the, uh, least, um, uh, take the least amount of construction. And, um, we also have taken into account all of the necessary screening that's required. Um, and then there's an additional landscape, new landscape that is, uh, complimentary to the architecture on the site itself. I think it's quite a sophisticated, restrained, um, landscape that is fitting for the area. But again, I think we're here looking for some direction as we know that, um, the variances required for the lot coverage and the fact that the pool is located within the front yard setback. Um, it was also noted that the proposed swimming pool should be located closer to the street than the rear, um, of the building.
No closer.
No closer.
Should be in the rear yard.
Right. Um, so this is our first time in front of you and, uh, we appreciate your time and we would maybe like some direction if that's possible.
Well, like you said, the coverage is an issue, it's 30% over.
Yeah, we're, we're, I had, I had, I'd missed the walls, so, um, we are allowable of 4,891 and we are, uh, currently at 5,997. And then we're, we've tried to mitigate the addition of the pool by removing some paths and things that are no longer used, so we end up with, uh, approximately 477 square feet above what we were, above that 1,100 feet.
Well, that's a major issue. The location of the pool in itself is even more major.
Yes, I.
By code, it's supposed to be behind the.
I'm aware, I'm aware.
The back of the house.
The front yard is, is very easily taken care of, but one of the issues with the house is the.
That's a major issue, the location of the.
No, I understand.
Not to mention the tree in the middle of the foot.
Well, that, that, that tree is, that tree is dying. That's the only tree that's disturbed by it. There's that lovely hemlock in the back, which.
You'd be much more comfortable if you were able to move the pool.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it, the issue, the issues for, for the landscape architect, aside of the historical nature of the house and trying to accommodate the living, the, 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 the pattern of life for the Sykes, is also that this property. is also that this property is sloping up towards the rear. That upper right corner is approximately 11 feet high than the pool area. So there is a significant amount of disruption and disturbance to do anything in the back. In addition, you know, a lot of hemlocks didn't survive the blight and this tree is actually rather beautiful. It's unlikely that you could work around that in terms of the pool unless you put it in the upper right far corner, which doesn't serve the owner's needs and also puts it in view of other neighbors. Where the pool is now, it's very well screened and hidden. The neighbor to the right, that's the rear yard, and Clifton Place runs on a diagonal. So that actually is a very hidden area in terms of the site. And I understand, you know, zoning issues and precedent. You know, our concern going forward is that we don't spend a lot of the Sykes' money in terms of engineering and other aspects that were, you know, addressed in Han's comments without knowing that this is approvable. And I know you can't say that, this is a zoning issue. And I also do note that your zoning regulations, I wrote it down somewhere, but you're after non-conforming properties and maintaining that. Now, this is a non-conforming property, we're increasing it, which requires a variance. We've tried to mitigate the amount of square footage that we are increasing it by.
What is the rest of the, any comments on the pool location or some other little details here? George?
You start, you start, so it's okay, all right. So I think you have some compelling reasons, okay? But the way I look at this, there is a zoning law that says you can't do what you want to do. So to me, it's almost like in the abstract that you're going to have to try to get that. The coverage to me is, that's, that I don't know how you deal with because that is, oh. We had someone come in here once and we used the term bold as far as what they were proposing. This is close to that, okay? So I think that, you know, sometimes you just don't have the alphabet to do what you want to do. So you're asking for a lot based on what the regulations are. And I would have a huge problem with kind of saying that, oh, it's okay to be so over on coverage because it's not necessarily what you're doing, it's the next person that goes in.
I'm aware.
So that's why, from the village perspective, that we're, I think that that's a, that's a big hurdle to go over to start with. So that's a planning board.
Issue for you and not just, not just the zoning board, for you as well.
Right, and the other issue is B, you know, it is in principle, would they be allowed to have pools in a front yard?
Well, we move it to the, the front yard issue is just this little corner. So that's, that's easily taken care of by shrinking the pool, but it clearly is- It clearly is in the side yard. There are a number of pools in that area and I did include that in my application that, from what I could tell from the aerial photography, are also inside yards. Not all of them, but there are, I think, four. So it's been done in that area. And as significant as that is, in terms of this house and historic nature, I think it's a mistake to put it in the rear yard, not from your point of view. From architectural purity, landscape design, you're fighting the slope of the land and you're putting it out your front door, which makes it less usable. Also, in terms of shade, the shading.
Microphone.
Obviously, it was not a very performer, but-
South is this way.
South is this way. This tree creates so much shade and there are so many other mature trees. We're only leaving everything in place. There's one diseased, I believe, maple here that comes down and that's it. Also, you know, you're accessing the property from an area that disturbs at least a amount of land as well. So that's, it doesn't change your point of view, which I-
Yeah, part two is that, honestly, is that sometimes you're just asking for too much.
Too much, I understand.
And that's, that's what you might have to, you know, discuss with your client.
Yeah, and we're looking for your direction because obviously, if you're going to tell us, look, even if you get the variance, we're very uncomfortable with this, we'd like to hear that.
I think you, I think you did, okay? Because it is, listen, it is an extreme amount of, you know, it's a, it's not a minimal difference, it's substantial.
On two code issues, two major code issues.
Right.
Like you said, the front yard, the corner, the whole pool is well in front of the backyard and-
It's totally-
I go by there and I looked at that, where the tree is, it's pretty close to the road.
Right, right.
Kevin?
I think my only thought is, I can't disagree-
Kevin's first appearance.
I gather his answer, I met your predecessor when I filed this, so.
I can't disagree with anything that's been said. I think, I think there's, you used the word compelling, George, and I think you presented a lot of reasons why we placed the pool where it is. And I think I'm a constant advocate for a lot of those. But the, there's that sort of threshold question about coverage, which is, is hard to get around. And, you know, I'm still understanding that here. Understanding the context within which, you know, this position that I'm sitting in is and trying to understand that. So I don't know exactly where I stand on that at the moment. But it seems like the biggest challenge, for sure.
And-
Again, I would agree with George and Caesar, their concerns. Obviously, you have a client, you know, who has a beautiful home and they want to enhance it.
The one question I would ask is, this house has remained substantially as it was created. Previous owners have not done much to it. I did do a review of aerial, historic aerial photography. They don't reproduce well, so I couldn't really include it. The only change, the only change is in the, over 100 years, 120 years of the house, at one point, there was a porch here. So this coverage, the coverage issues are not self-created. I mean, I believe at one time, the lot was a lot bigger. There were formal gardens leading up to Broadway or whatever property they owned. And that is, you know, that is a reality. But this is not a property that had been modified really at all in ways that increase coverage. So, you know, and again, that doesn't change the percent amounts.
That is existing and we're not telling you that you have to take it away. Is that you're asking to-
Add to it. And I'll ask the question too, if we found ways to remove other things such as the shed or other square footage so that that increase was even smaller. Net increase now is 477 square feet. If that shrunk, would that make a difference or you're still stuck with that thousand over? And you're building something-
You're stuck with the pool location.
Pool location is, well, that's separate from the, there are two major issues here.
There's a math issue there.
Yeah, the math issue is the primary.
What was to the north and south, is that there's nothing between the house and the road to the south? And nothing to, between the house and the road to the north? There's nothing between the house and Marston Avenue and nothing between the house and the college?
You mean at, now?
Yeah. What was there, what, did they own that once?
No, I didn't go back through all your land use records. I know that there was, there's a photograph, I believe, in the 20s that doesn't show any other homes here, doesn't show what this property owned. But, you know, there's grand, this isn't Lindhurst. But Lindhurst had, the River Homes were built facing the water with the fronts facing the street. And that's their handicap in terms of locating the pool. And, you know, obviously, the landscape architect is trying to do something beautiful and fits. But although I don't minimize the difficulties that you have sitting on that side of the table, is that there's nobody living here. This house is over there, this is their rear yard. And this is their living area. And, you know, we have a fairly significant slope. We're 120 and we're down to 112, so. But again, doesn't change the numbers. It's a difficult site.
Well, one of the options is to, like you said, the, no sense proceeding if the zoning, ZBA doesn't approve the variances, which are, as George planned out, are significant.
Right.
If you want to go to the zoning board, we would write a note that we-
You're not happy about this, yes, I got it, that's honest. And I guess my question is if we, if we try to get to somehow to be a net zero increase or close to that, does that change anything for you? Or you still think the significance of the side yard and the fact that we're that much over would not change how you'd view the project? That's a question.
Not sure.
You're not sure, okay.
Oh, I would say that if you, you're going to tell me that your coverage is not going to change.
Right.
Or it's only going to change in a minute.
That changes things a little bit.
That changes things a lot for me.
Okay.
For this. And if there's a way, then you can make it so that, then the whole thing about the front yard versus side yard and-
Well, the side yard still becomes the issue, that becomes the primary issue.
Certainly, that was down the-
Yeah, the number of issue, right, because I can stay with the existing non-conformity in terms of the coverage.
Right.
Okay.
Because you're, in essence, you're not making the non-conforming any-
Not increasing it, I got it, I got it, or not significant.
So what are your plans now, do you, is that to increase the coverage?
I would, and I didn't talk to the Sykes, so you can tell me you don't like the ideas, but-
I like the pool, I mean, I'm-
I would get rid of the shed, I would possibly shrink the pool, I would look at other- There isn't a lot going on, I mean, I follow the rules and I, thankfully, with AutoCAD, you can map everything exactly. We would look for little things like, can we eliminate features, small features? And it's only 477 square foot feet, we can maybe make that happen by shrinking things, removing some things and tweaking the plan. I mean, one of the things we did, this is about 1,000 square feet, is there were some old paths that led to that formal garden that was in this area and we've eliminated them. And I would look to see what else we could remove.
Can you eliminate the front yard setback problem?
Yeah, this is easy, this is just, this is, this is-
What about sliding the pool slightly back?
You know, you're right on access, I would rather shrink the pool. I mean, that's not, it's not for me to say, but to shrink it and maybe play with the spa, maybe the spa flips, something to tighten this up.
That wouldn't be a bad idea, the spa.
Well, and then also, you know, it's a game of inches, it's accounting, so we try to really-
It could be a bad idea to flip the spa.
So-
Because that further exacerbates closeness to the road.
Right, and it, you know, moves, move things back. The axis, I mean, what James did with this axis is, it's a really classical design.
The picture you're showing, you're correct.
Right.
I have, as George said, I have sympathy for what you-
Yeah, we're not, we're not, I like to make pretty and things that look good and James does as well, so. Anyway, I think that's it, we appreciate your direction and we're going to go back to the-
You'll come back here with-
Leave and be creative.
Yes.
Because they want a pool.
Yes, I know.
Okay?
So, all right, thank you very much.
We'll leave, there's some other details.
Yes, please.
Water privated, and you saw that?
Yes.
Yes, prohibited by D E C.
Yep, loaded.
Positive environmental consideration.
Right.
If you're looking at where the pool equipment is and draining the pool, draining the pool kind of stuff?
Uh, yeah.
The comment was there, yes.
Yeah, we did mention that.
There's a lot of stuff we can add.
And draining the pool? Where does the drainage go if they have to drain?
Yep.
Okay. That's it? We appreciate your feedback and understanding.
And I understand your point of view.
Okay. And by the way, any comments in the public on this project? Was it here? No. Okay, thank you. Meeting's closed.
Thank you.
Motion. Motion. Close.
We have a motion, closing meeting.
Go in.
Second. All of those raised.
Agreed.